All right, I would like to call to order the Tuesday, April 20th meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And as usual, we will start with our roll call, please. City Recorder Phyllis Bowman.
Counselor Belts is excused. Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor McKeel?
Here.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Here.
Mayor Coontz?
I am here. And for the flag salute this evening, Counselor Lopez with a new haircut, would you please lead us in that flag salute?
Yes, gladly. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Well, my apologies. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And this evening, our consent calendar consists of the minutes of the council meeting of April 6th. And I would ask if there are any corrections or additions to the meeting, otherwise move to approve.
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel and Counselor Salinas Oliveros. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Great, thank you. We will record those.
There she is.
And move on to citizen comments. Tonight, we will entertain those comments. And there is no one here in the room except our itemizer observer, observer and reporter. And I understand we have a citizen comment to read into the record. Phyllis, has anyone else indicated they are here to speak during public comments?
No, they have not. Mayor Coontz?
Okay. Thank you. So, and Counselor McKeel, I believe you have something for us if you'd like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is from Christina Branshaw. Pickleball has become very popular among seniors and people of all ages. There are several communities around who have nice pickleball courts, such as Dallas, Salem, Corvallis, and Albany, to name a few. By the Monmouth Dog Park are some tennis courts that are in very poor condition. It would be great and an ideal spot to build a few pickleball courts. Baseball fields are there, the skate park is close. Dallas has a pickleball club where members pay $10 a year. Maybe something like this would be feasible in Monmouth and could help with cost and upkeep. I think it will benefit people of all ages. Best regards.
Thank you for sharing that. We'll forward that to Ms. Bowman to be included in the public record. Any other public comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, our first order of business this evening is actually a proclamation. We are coming upon one of Monmouth's favorite celebrations, and that is Arbor Day. And I would like to proclaim Arbor Day and read this proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Monmouth has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting endeavors. Whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now, therefore I, Cecilia El Coontz, Mayor of the City of Monmouth, do hereby proclaim April 20th today, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Monmouth. And I urge all citizens to support our efforts year-round to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monmouth to be affixed on this 20th day of April, 2021. And thanks to our staff, who have been doing a lot of work on preserving trees and trying to figure out how we're going to move forward with those after our ice storm, and to our wonderful tree board. The work that they do in promoting and taking care of the trees and planting additional trees for our city is much appreciated. So yay for being a Tree City USA. And with that, we will move to yay trees, yay trees, yay trees, yay trees. We will move to our business agenda and start off with our financial report. I see our Director Janet Shennard on the call. And so we have in our packet the quarterly report, and I'll turn it over to Janet.
Honorable council members, can you believe it's the third quarter already done? So I've brought to you a financial report that I'm happy to say continues to look fairly good. There are, there's a lot of green there. And even the yellows that I've left on my, my one-stop-shopping financial watch are, you know, are there more just because, you know, we do have to watch some things. So municipal court fines remain low. And that is a function of your very able police department focusing on other things and trying to remain safe and keep people safe as far as social distancing out in the field. So we don't know if that will start to tick up again because we're pretty sure people are still misbehaving. But we have, you know, that's not the worst thing that can happen. We don't rely on those dollars extensively. As far as the street fund and tourism funds go, those were the two areas I really expected to be harder hit, as I've mentioned in the past, with shortfalls in revenue. And that just hasn't proven to be the case. I do think that, you know, or at least they're in line with the projections, if not a little higher than what I was projecting. I did want to speak briefly to the marijuana tax revenue because I know Counselor Carey mentioned last time his concern about Measure 110 and the implications of that. And you'll see here that I've noted the information from the state. And what, what is bearing out is that we are now, from the state shared revenue side, only seeing about 70, only seeing about 25% of the revenue that was forecast originally to come to us by the League of Oregon Cities with their, in their partnership with the state. So that is, you know, a hit. It's not a super significant hit because, again, these are not big monies to us. Typically, we get in the range of 18,000 to 20,000 for that. So we're getting 4,000 to 5,000 now for the state shared revenues. And on the local side, we're still outpacing a little bit what we forecast for that. And as you may have heard, there is a House Bill, the House Bill 2015, that is, hasn't had a lot of activity on it yet, but that looks like it would allow us to increase local tax for marijuana up to 10%. So at some point, that is something that I'm sure your city manager will bring forward if it looks suspicious to do so. And if there's an interest from council in doing that. And that would obviously help offset, to some degree, that situation. Otherwise, the, like, as I mentioned, you know, you can see that revenues are generally up. The general fund is looking good as far as expenditures by department. The last thing that I would really potentially draw your attention to is the final page where I outlined, the final page which has the investment report, but also includes just a brief overview of the ice storm. I always like to throw a little nugget in there that will make you read till the end. And so in this case, I wanted to let you know kind of the work, some of the work we've been doing to try and recoup some of those costs. I think the city manager shared with you back in late February, early March, that we were talking to FEMA about possible grant monies. Sadly, insurance doesn't cover much, if anything, of these costs that we've incurred. And they are in the range of over $220,000, including a call-out to the Tillamook PUD to assist with some of the cleanup. So that's directly out of our pocket, not projected or budgeted for. We have, at this point, been able to absorb it in our appropriations, but obviously, that meant we couldn't do other things. So, so we would like to see some of those monies back, and we'll continue to work with FEMA, as we are still working with FEMA on some COVID relief. And then the next thing up will be ARPA, the American Rescue Plan. So more about that and budget when we meet next week. But for now, that's what I have for you for third-quarter financial report, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much. And I see Counselor Carey may have a question for you.
I think it's an easy one, but I didn't, you have the tourism fund as a watch, but the narrative seems to suggest that it's in pretty good shape. Why did you have that as a watch?
I just have it as a watch because they're still not back to normal. Our two major hotels and our Airbnbs are not getting with, you know, with having a lower student population and not having the parents coming to town and not having the big sports events, we're not seeing the kind of turnovers that we have seen in the past. You know, does it need to be a watch? Things might look better, but numbers are going up again as far as COVID cases. So I still feel like that's one of the places we're most vulnerable as far as a revenue source. And, and, you know, we haven't been spending that money, obviously, because there haven't been a lot of events that we can support. So, you know, we are in reasonably good shape, you're right. But just to the extent that we want to use the tourism fund to promote tourism when tourism is possible again, we haven't moved forward very far, I guess, is the point.
Yeah, it's fine.
Same topic, Janet. It says not much spending on the tourism fund through quarter one. Is that typo?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I thought that was probably, I just wanted to.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks.
And Counselor Lopez? Did you get the water spill cleaned up, Counselor Lopez? We understand you had a little bit of a water spill during the pledge allegiance, so.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you for that. I did, did add that into the chat. My, my apologies to the group here for my stuttering. I was quite flustered. I'd just spilled a glass of water all over my desk and a bunch of electronics, but I think everything's okay. My, my question here, though, I actually have two separate questions on separate items. But, but I'd like to, I'd like to start with the, the street fund. And I know we've spoken about this a lot in the past, but would like to just revisit it a little bit. I actually had a conversation with a resident today on the topic of the street fund and how that intersects with the stormwater utility. I do know that we have it as a watch still despite the stormwater utility. Could you, could you just give a very brief narrative, perhaps, about the, the direction of that? And perhaps a little color on how it's going in the future versus how it would have been going? I know we've covered this, but it, I'd appreciate a refresher.
No problem at all, and that's a really good point. So I mentioned, of course, that highway taxes, I, you know, we're anticipating them being down a bit because of COVID. But the other piece is that with the stormwater utility, the original budget was set with the expectation that we might be able to go with the middle level of service. And so the revenues and the revenues were forecast through six months of the year rather than just four months of the year. And with the timing of when we implemented the stormwater utility, as well as the fact that we did the discount rate on the basic level of service, means we don't have as much revenue this fiscal year in the stormwater fund to do some of the work that we were anticipating and hoping to be able to do in the stormwater fund. In fact, you will see, when the budget comes out, that our projections for fiscal year-end in the stormwater fund are spending a lot less there, getting a lot less there for the last half of this year. And so that's, that's really what's happening is we're either doing less stormwater activity than we had anticipated, but also we're still having to pay for it with, largely with street monies. We're trying to move stuff over as we can afford to do so, but not to the level that we had thought we would when we were budgeting. So that's why it's still a watch. And we'll have a much better idea by this time next year how well the street fund is doing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the added color there. The other item I just wanted to touch on is, as, as a win, I know a lot of times we look at these things and, you know, look for, look for areas that we need to pay more attention to. But the, the win that I do want to call out is Minnet is listed as green again. And I did just receive today, or actually a couple of days ago, that Minnet is projected to cover 100% of their June debt service payments as well. So it's an item that I feel like has been in the yellow or red categories since, I guess, as long as we've been trying to, you know, build a city hall, right? But really happy to see it come into the green category here and stay there for a couple of cycles.
Exactly. And I will actually be participating in some budget discussions with them and have a better idea, hopefully, of what, what their hopes and dreams are for next year in coverage of debt. But, you know, part of it is that we were able to, of course, reduce their debt load for this year, for the 2017, since we refunded them. So I think they were appreciative of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Good, good questions. Not, not our largest funds, but things that we do talk about frequently. And it's good to point out when we do have some good news. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Janet. Seeing none of those, we will move on. And we have a monthly, we're starting a monthly report from our police department in this month, a timely discussion about a new program. And so I see our interim sergeant, our interim chief with us this evening, Isaiah Haynes. Thank you, Isaiah, for joining us and telling us about this new program.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. In your, the staff report, I gave you guys information on three separate teams, actually, that are part of our response and resources that police have towards mental health-related calls. And this is really way too much to unpack, I will say, in 15 minutes. But I'm gonna do my best to summarize, really, some of these programs, what they mean for us, and then talk a little bit about just what a, a call for service might look like. And really, that's just to paint the picture. I think law enforcement, sometimes it's tricky. And I think that we, as we've talked about before, we don't always do a good job of explaining, really, how we respond to things. And I think that's, that's the goal of these, these trainings or topics that we do. And so really, I just want to be able to provide some information that maybe people weren't aware of or realize how we, how we operate. So really, the, the first thing that, and I'm proud of, and I've talked about it before, but that we participate in and send our officers to is, is the crisis intervention training. And this training is, it's a 40-hour block for, for police officers and where they get specialized training in dealing with people that are in a mental health crisis. And that's just one of the aspects of CIT. And that's what I'll talk mostly about tonight. But just to kind of touch on the other things that make up a CIT program, it's, we have the police training, there's the, the community collaboration. And this is really just individuals, organizations within the community who help with program development, training, providing feedback, volunteer who give their time to, to help with, with those things. Number three would be the vibrant inaccessible crisis system. And this is a very important step because really, it's, this wouldn't be any good if we didn't have this system, I guess, in place. And really, what I mean by that is that a system that's accessible and used, and that's so that police also use the system. If you have something in place that isn't very accessible for, for officers to use it, it simply won't be used. And so, and that's what, I guess, what I mean by that is that's really how, when, when officers encounter somebody that's, that's maybe in crisis and they have, I guess, determined that jail is not the place for this person. And that's, that's really the goal of CIT, is really to reduce incarceration for individuals who are experiencing behavioral health issues. And so really, what we want to be able to do is, is to respond to this person, help them in their, in their crisis, but really pass them off into the behavioral health system. And if, so if we don't have access, and really what that means is that if we identify that somebody needs to go to the hospital or they need to go see somebody at the psychiatric crisis center in Salem, that we can take them there and actually give them the services. You know, that their doors aren't closed or that they're not so full that they won't accept these people, because then we have a broken system. So, so that is a step three of this. And then, then our behavioral health staff is, has the training that they need. And I will say that in Polk County, we have wonderful staff that are very helpful and provide train, ongoing training to us and, and services. And lastly, is the family, consumers and advocates that we collaborate with and, and they help educate us. So anyways, and really, I guess what I want to talk about with CIT is that we have, they recommend that you, that each law enforcement agency, CIT International, that you send 20 to 25% of your people through this class. And I think that's geared towards a large agency, that you have multiple officers respond to these calls for service and that, you know, probably at least one of those officers is going to be CIT trained. And I will just say that in Monmouth, we have, we have a goal that we have all of our officers through CIT training. And that really just depends on, as we, you know, hire some people and we may lose people. And so there's this ongoing training cycle, but currently, we have about 70% of our officers that have been to training. And so really, every day, there is somebody, if not everybody, that has been CIT trained. So that is a good thing. And I guess what I'll point out is, is you look through what CIT training is, and part of that packet that you all have is really just a sample CIT training agenda. And I will, I was part of, I think, Monmouth PD's inaugural class that went through this training about five years ago. And I think even since then, they've really expanded and they've improved. It was kind of a, a work in progress, so to speak, when I went through it. And it was still great. And I will just say that, you know, there were so many things learned. They brought in so many different professionals from doctors and, and, you know, therapists, counselors. And really, it was culminated with scenarios. And those scenarios were actually with people that were experiencing some mental health issues, you know. But they were people that had, you know, that were, generally speaking, and really, the mantra was, is that the medication for many of these people, they, they realized that they needed medication to be regulated. And these were people that had been identified, that had been, that had, I guess, successfully managed some of their mental health issues. And, but they came and they really gave that, that firsthand experience of speaking through what their diagnosis was, how it, how it presented, things that worked well for them, things that didn't work well when police responded. And then we would actually go through scenarios that, you know, were scripted, of course, but where they would be the role player and we would have to respond, and they would give feedback on those. And so that was the last day. And that was probably the most beneficial thing that we did, working together with other officers, but also having that feedback. And really, I would say that relationship with, with those people. Some of these people were maybe even people that we were familiar with, that we had responded to. And so that was pretty phenomenal. And like I said, that's a goal that we get everyone through. And, and that's a little bit about CIT. And I know I just skimmed things. And I will move into the mobile crisis response team. And really, what that is, is kind of a, another leg of CIT. But this is where that we have paired, the model that Polk County uses is we've paired a deputy with a qualified mental health professional. And we have two teams in Polk County. And I say Polk County because there's one team in Salem and one team in Polk County. We will get Salem response at times, depending on if the Polk County team is off. They work kind of complementary shifts. And so we have the Polk County, you know, team, let's just say, Monday through Thursday, from noon to 10 o'clock. And then the Salem team would work like a Thursday through Monday, you know, from noon to 10 o'clock. So they overlap on their shift. So there, there's usually 10 hours of, of the day that we will have access to MCRT. And MCRT is a great resource in the sense that they're probably going to have more experience going to these calls because they have, one, the, the mental health professional with the officer. But then even this officer has been through more training than just the 40-hour CIT class. And I think that when you respond to these types of calls, you get better and better and you become more efficient and more successful in navigating these types of things. So typically, and what that looks like for us is that if we have a call for service where we suspect that it is mental health-related, and that can look so many different ways. We get calls that we know right off the bat that maybe it's somebody who's suffering from suicidal ideations. And they've mentioned, maybe it's, they, they've thought about suicide by cop or whatever it is. We know right off the get-go that this is going to be some kind of a mental health-related call. A lot of times, what we'll do is make sure that the mobile crisis response team is on duty, that they're able to respond, and that's usually what we will default to. Now, if we need to have, based on circumstances, an officer there first, we may still send one of our officers there because maybe it's a, a life safety thing that is immediate and urgent that we have to send somebody to. We will still have an officer respond in that case, or they may respond as, as backup or as secondary to the mobile crisis response team. So it's pretty common to have both a Monmouth officer and MCRT on these calls. And there's also, we, you know, just to be frank, it would be nice to have about three of these teams because these calls are definitely on the rise in Monmouth and really everywhere. And there's a lot of times that really MCRT is not available. And so there's always going to be usually a Monmouth officer that has to have some level of response at the very get-go. And sometimes we can pass those off to MCRT. And really, when that's helpful also is when we determine whether it be voluntary, that the, the person that we're dealing with has said that they want to seek help for themselves. Seek help for themselves and they want to go to the psychiatric, uh, crisis center in Salem, which is next to the ER. And, um. MCRT is great because they will, uh, respond and they will actually give this person a ride. We will also do that, but in Monmouth, I mean, there's many times that we have one officer on. And so we would much rather be able to have our city staffed instead of, um. Having to be over in Salem for a period of time. So. It's very helpful for that, or whether it's somebody who is a danger to themselves or others. And they need to be transported really against their will, but it's a police officer hold, uh, to the, the Salem ER and MCRT will also do that for us. So. Um, they're very helpful, not only just in a response, but also as a resource for us that we can keep our officers here, uh, in the city. So we, um, and really just as I was kind of preparing to, to talk about this tonight. Um, I guess just to highlight the, the amount of these calls that we go to, I think. Um, there is a, a mental health related aspect. To so many of these calls and they don't always come out, uh, dispatched as that, that, that you automatically know it's a. Uh, emotionally disturbed person or something like that. But you find out quickly upon responding that there is some. Uh, level of that that you're dealing with. And, um, it just today, right before, uh, I got on this meeting. Uh, we had three calls right in a row that were all mental health related, uh, incidents. And those are people that are, again, that are suicidal or that are, um. It could be hallucinating or, uh, having these ideations and, um. That is, that is a, a normal occurrence for us now, uh, sadly. So it's, it's really important that we have. Not only officers that are CIT trained, but also access to MCRT, uh, super valuable resources. And, uh, the last thing that I'll, that I'll highlight before I open it up to questions is, uh, the FACT program. And, um, this is a really new program. I, I was, uh, trying to answer some questions, um. For counselor, uh, Selena Solubero. And so I was, I was doing some more research today and reaching out to, um, some of the, uh. Uh, other stakeholders and, uh. I had to verify that this was actually up and running because this is so brand new really to Polk County that I had to verify that this is actually off the ground and running because. Uh, this has been talked about now for months, but I wasn't entirely sure, um, that we were, um. Started yet. Um, but I was assured that we are and there are, uh, clients in our community now. And I think that they, I was told that there's eleven. With another eleven that are still on the waiting list. Um, and really what I'll highlight about this, um. Because there's probably a lot that I'm not qualified to speak on, I guess, but. Um, is that this is huge because this is getting the mental health professionals and the wraparound services, whether it be doctors. Uh, you name it into the field and, and really, um. Making it so that. Police don't have to respond to some of these things. And I say that because a lot of times that we respond, I mean, it's, we're, we're talking to, um. To people that, that need medication to, uh, kind of regulate themselves that aren't taking their medication anymore. And, uh, we get there and we determine, okay, there's not been a crime committed. Uh, this person clearly is, is having a hard time, maybe caring for themselves, but it doesn't rise to the level of us being able to take them somewhere. They don't want to volunteer to go to the psychiatric, psychiatric crisis center and we're kind of left saying. What do we do here? You know, how can we help this person? We know that we're going to get more calls. We, we're worried that whether it be that they're, um. Walking into traffic, causing a disturbance, um. We, we get a lot of these calls. And so, um. What, the, the FACT program is huge just because they will check in on these clients, um. Two, sometimes three times per day. And they are making face to face contact, they're making phone calls, they're getting them to appointments, they're helping them with medications. They're doing all these things in the field because that's the biggest thing. When we talked about access, even with, uh, the, the CIT program. That's what is, what is lacking in a lot of ways. This gives that access to them at their house. And, um, that is just so needed and such a, a tool for us. And so, uh, again. Just speaking to our community, I know that we have clients that are, that are in this program. And it's, it's not, uh, it doesn't mean that we won't have calls for service regarding them or still have to, uh, respond to them. But I will say that, um. From my experience, it has been, uh. I, I guess, uh, more likely that when they are receiving these services and they're actively engaged and they're in this, um, system, so to speak, that we. Um, have to do that much less. And you see a lot of people kind of break the cycle that they, that they have, that's call after call. And. Um, so. Again, I know that I'm just kind of touching on that briefly, but it is a, a hugely important, uh, team and program and that we're excited to have and. And, uh, just another part of our system. So. I know that I skipped a whole bunch of things and, um, maybe wasn't the most organized, but I would, um, I'm trying to keep it brief and also. Uh, give time for questions. So if you guys, uh, have questions, uh, feel free to ask away and I'll do my best to answer.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, that is a, a lot of information there and I appreciate the, the overview. And I bet we do have questions and I will start with Counselor Lopez.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much, um, Officer Haynes. I, uh, I, I really, uh, really appreciate. The presentation here tonight and it sounds like a really, uh, key component to, um, to, to, to policing and, and, and this day and age. Um, I, I was, I, I have a few questions for you. Um, first, uh, when you, you mentioned that you were part of the, kind of the first class to go into this here. Um, when, uh, when, when was that? What was the timeline?
So that was, uh, twenty sixteen.
Wonderful, wonderful. And to have, I guess, uh, you know, did, did you have, um, a view of what? The day to day implications on, you know, in our town. And with our local policing looked like prior to that and then after. Um, I guess I'm looking for, you know, not just the benefits of what CIT does, which you, I think, laid out pretty well. Um, but I guess I'm looking for, um, an analogy about the transformation that, uh, that happens, uh. Hopefully throughout the, the department through this training.
Yeah, you know, I, I can actually share, uh, kind of a, a quick story, but I remember being, uh, probably a, a two or three year officer at the time. And really when I started, when you got a call for service, it didn't so much matter what it was. Uh, you were going to go to that call for service. It was a call that you needed to respond to. And that was really kind of the training and, and how we, we did things. And, um. I, I remember being, getting a call for service of, of a person who said that they, um, wanted to commit suicide by cop. And there was a whole bunch of other red flags and, and things that were very concerning, uh, on this call. And I remember, uh, myself and a, a sergeant at the time and another, uh, Polk County deputy, um, kind of meeting up and saying, okay. Well, let's, uh, go to this call. And I remember, you know, they were like, I'm going to be on this side of the house. I'm going to be on this side of the house and. You're going to go make contact at the front door. And I remember standing at the front door and thinking. What are we doing? You know, uh, he- here I am, uh, responding to this call when we have somebody who clearly is, is in a, um. In a, a mental health crisis who has stated they want to commit suicide by cop and I'm showing up at the front door. And, um, I remember just having this feeling as I'm standing there like, uh. This, this isn't right. And, and it was just really, um, it's a shift in. And adjustment and, and really how we operate. And it's still, it doesn't mean that we aren't going to respond to that call, but there's a, a likelihood that we, that we never do. That we never go to the scene because we're going to call, um, try to make phone contact. We're going to try to call family members. We're going to try to call other people before even doing that. And there's so many other state, uh, steps now that we would take, uh, before showing up at that door. And because we don't want to escalate a situation and we, and we want to, um. Deescalate or, or, uh, not be a, a factor in, in pushing something further than it needs to go. So. Uh, there's been a huge transformation. I would just say that that really, um. Kind of. Changed our response to many things. It, it, it was, it was not just these, uh, mental health related calls, but it kind of made us reevaluate how we respond to. To every call. And, um, are we doing things right? Could we be doing things better? Do we need to slow down? Do we need more information? It's all, all these different things. So. I would say that there, there has been transformation over the past, you know, uh, ten, twelve years.
Thank you, uh, that, thank you very much for that. And, uh, thank you for relaying that, uh, those, those experiences. Um, one, one more question that I have for you is, uh, you know, I, I. Are you, if you're familiar with the, um, cahoots teams in, um, in Eugene. Um, I've, I've watched a couple of, uh, segments and documentaries about that. How does, uh, how does this program compare or contrast with that? And. You know, perhaps if you know, why, why did we go this model instead of, uh, kind of that cahoots model?
Yeah, so, uh, really, uh, cahoots would be, um. Really their version of MCRT. And that would be, you know, where we paired a deputy and a, uh, qualified mental health professional. They would have the mental health professional paired with a paramedic. And that was really just, um. You know, I, I guess I wasn't in that and I don't even know who was part of that decision-making process. But I think that you just see these different models and, you know, for whatever reason, uh, that was really. I guess what, and really I, I think our model came from Marion County. Uh, this was something that I don't think Polk County developed or anything. I think it was really, uh, hey, we see what our neighbors are doing. And that looks like a really good system and we're going to do that. So, um, I think they're both good models. I think there's probably pros and cons to both. Um. But there, I guess, I, I don't have, uh, the best answers to why that decision was made, but they are very similar programs. It's just a, a different pairing.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, Counselor McKeel, and then I have a question as well.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I will yield to you if you would rather go first. Okay. Uh, I, I would like to just repeat what, uh, Counselor Lopez said, uh, to interim chief Haynes. Thank you very much. This was such a really good presentation that you made. I, I just have two questions. One is the, the, uh, sorry, I'm. Oh, the FACT program. Sorry, I made notes and I've got to figure out where to put my notes. Um, you said that we have eleven people in the program and I think eleven people on the waiting list. And I'm assuming that we probably could use even more. Um, do you have an estimate about? How many people we should like try to find a place for in this? Is there something that we can do to get these people a place in this program?
You know, uh, that's a good question. And I would say, um. I'm sure that there is more people that are in need. And I, I think that, you know, one of the things with FACT is that it has to meet their criteria. And I think that there's a lot of times that, uh, we have people that we think would benefit from this service. Uh, but part of it is, is they, they don't reach the criteria. And really that is that they're, they're maybe not somebody that has. Um, so many arrest cycles. Maybe we get a lot of calls for service, but they've never been actually arrested. And so they don't have those cycles. Um. Or they, or they, even though they have mental illness, it's not the serious mental illness that they kind of define in this program. So. Um. It is, i- it's really kind of reserved for the, some of the most, um. You know, e- extreme examples or, uh, repeat, um, you know, customers, I guess, the, and, and that's what it's geared towards. So. Um, it would be really nice to have something that, that maybe had lesser, uh. Uh, parameters, I guess, to get in. But I, but I think that it's a, um. We, we're, we're a county and it doesn't even matter where you are. There's finite resources everywhere. And I think that, you know, this is a, a great program, but. There's probably a whole bunch of, uh. There's a whole bunch more that's needed, I guess. And, and I don't know the, the right way or who, um. You know, uh, would provide those services, but it would be nice to see, um, I guess more capacity. I just don't know that it's in this program. It's very specific. So if there's another program that was similar, um, that would be, uh. Probably the way to do it, but. Uh, I guess that's, that's as much as I can probably speak to that.
So, and I'm assuming this is paid with county dollars?
Yeah, and it's the, uh, I'm going to draw a blank on it now that I'm on the spot. It's the, uh, Justice, uh, Reinvestment, uh. Act, I believe. Or, uh, grant money. So there is actually a, uh, we have currently right now, and I don't know if this program will continue or not, but we have. A mental health court, which is another, um, program that we have that I didn't talk about tonight. And, um, it, it's a different program, but that, that program may be going away, um. Because of FACT, because FACT is taking some of those funds. And so, um. I think they look at this FACT program as something that would be a, a, a bigger benefit than maybe mental health court. And so they've kind of. Prioritized and gone that route. Um, but, uh. They, uh, that's the primary source of funding, I believe.
Thank you. I, I guess I have three questions. I lied. So, because I had a, nevermind, okay. So the other one, uh, I was really happy to see that. Uh, we, once again, in Monmouth are pushing the envelope of what. Is required by having all of our officers do the CIT training. So that's really, really great. Um, I, looking over the agenda, and I don't know if this, this looks like it's the shoots and maybe it's different than the one we do. But I, I didn't see anything in the agenda on, um, like bias training or understanding how bias might be part of CIT. And, and I know that our officers have done their training for racial healing and understanding, which is, again, really cool. And, and I, I don't know if you can explain how those two are connected so that. You know, officers are taking the CIT, but they also have this bias training and. I know, I, there's a question in there somewhere. Just go ahead and rearrange words so that it comes out as a question, I can.
I, I, I think they're both, uh, vitally important trainings, obviously. Um, and I know that there's probably room and, and I think that that's, this is one of those trainings. Again, I, I talked about that really, we've been going for five years. But when, when Polk County kind of implemented this program, I think they looked at it as a, as a work in progress and that it would always be evolving and changing. And so I think that there's probably room and there is probably, um. You know, for those, some different blocks of training to be in this forty hour group, you know, and. Um, whether that happens, um, I don't know. Um, I think that there's always a, a push that you can do for that, but I will say that. Um, there is a whole bunch of other training, whether it be bias related or, uh, whether, you know, police and minority, uh, relations, whatever it is. There is so many different things that we do have access to that may be separate. So, um, even though it's not in this, uh, kind of sample training. And it wasn't in the training that, that I went to five years ago, uh, but I have had, you know, and, and. As has our whole, uh, PD, different bias, uh, related training. So that's been separate from this. So. Um, it'd be nice to see something maybe married together where you could do that, but, uh, currently, uh, I'm not aware of that being in a CIT, uh, program.
And, and we've had, uh, what is the number of officers that have taken the Western training for racial and healing and understanding?
Four.
Is that four? Okay. So it'd be good to, I guess, keep that going to them. Cause I think combined is just such a much, yeah, it's a really powerful understanding of de-escalation. So, and I thank you. Thank you very much for all your explanations on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, great questions. And yes, Carol, there is a full intention of continuing the racial healing training again. Remember it was many partners in the community. There were limited slots, uh, for each partner. And so we're going to kind of continue that. Model where each session would have slots for, uh, community partners. So that will happen. And like my, uh, questions, I think were kind of covered. Uh, you mentioned the mental health court and I just read an article in the Salem Reporter that they did have their final graduation. Early April because this FACT program is, is taking over. And, uh, obviously with the funding is probably the main reason for not being able to do both, but, um. And, and you mentioned that program already. Um, but my other, just confirmation. We are not contributing financially to either of these programs, either. Um, the FACT program or the MCRT. I don't believe, is that correct? Those are fully funded by the county, likely through grants.
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So we are getting a great benefit from these programs. Um, for, for not putting actual money in, but just having our people engaged. Yes, Counselor McKeel.
I just continued to continue to ask questions. So, sorry. But i- i- if we're not paying for, if we're not contributing to the service. But it sounds like, if I understand interim chief's Haynes, uh, comments. This service actually decreases the amount of, uh, work that the police have, the police have to do. With this very difficult, uh, situation. It would seem to be, uh, beneficial if we could come up with local resources to. to get these extra 11 people that are on the waiting list actually part of the program. Is it a resource issue or it's just like there's? I mean, if we, if we were able to help fact out so that they had a few more resources, they could expand and at least take our 11 people? Or maybe I'm way out of the blue. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I, I think the question, that might be a question for Polk County, Carol. Because again, I think some of this is grant funded and things. But that's a question for Polk County. What would they need to be able to expand this service? And if that was contribution from partners, then that would certainly be something that they would, could approach all of the partners with. So, yeah.
I would just say that I, that I use the term waiting list maybe loosely. And really what I mean by waiting list and the way it was kind of explained to me is it's not that they won't get in, that they're waiting for somebody else to, to move out of this program. But really, it's that they, they've identified people and they're making sure that they meet all the criteria and they're trying to get them plugged in. So I think it's kind of, it's a waiting list because they're not fully yet into the system, I guess, so to speak. But, but they will be. They anticipate that they will be.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that helps. Counselor Oberst, and then if there's one more question, we will do that and move on.
I say, my sense was that this program is so new that the fact that we've got 11 in already and 11 more trying to get in, that those 11 is just such a new program. They haven't had time to get everybody in a sec. That was what I, I thought I heard you say going through the first time.
Yeah, they, they did have.
To put some resources into helping those folks get in.
Yeah, and this is new in the sense of this. So they had, they added the F onto the program. It used to be they had an assertive community treatment team. And they've now added the forensic piece to this. And so it has changed some of their services and added an arm in this. But they, they did have kind of a blueprint. And right now, it's kind of this hybrid model because they've taken some people that were part of this act program. And they've now changed the program and they will be, they're adding more because they realize that there's more to do. So yes, I guess to your comment is that it is very new. But I think that they are, they were able to kind of get some people in right away as they've kind of planned this move. And now they have more people that they are looking to, I guess, enroll in this program that are still kind of on this temporary list until they, it's official.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't see additional questions at this time. And I'm sure we'll be, continue to keep track of this program and the benefits to our communities. So thank you very much, Chief. And we will move to our next item, which is the Extensive Code Assistance Program and our Community and Economic Development Director, Suzanne Duffner.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the City Council. And yes, I just realized, we took the bulk of the packet, the paper this time. So it just wanted to be thorough in all the, the documents that were being referenced. So thank you for your patience. Hopefully, a lot of that looks familiar from previous work session that we had in February. So, yeah, let me just quickly introduce the project. The Code Assistance Project Team members that are here tonight. We have Sarah Breakstone with, she's our project consultant with OTAC. And she'll be given a little PowerPoint presentation on the Final Action Plan. We also have Laura Buell that is joining us. She's taking place of Stacy Goldstein with the TGM Project Coordinator. So thank you, Laura, for, for jumping in there. Stacy received or took another position in ODOT. So I'm really glad to have Laura jump in there and take that over. And then we also have our Associate, City Associate Planner for the City of Monmouth, Liz Pongrass is with us. So, great. And as you may recall, the council did have a work session on this agenda item last February with the Planning Commission to get an introduction to the Code Assistance Project and look at a draft action plan. So this is a two-phase project that's grant funded. And we're in that first phase. And the, the goal of the first phase is to do an audit or assessment of our current zoning ordinance and find out where those barriers and those sticking points are that we want to get in and make some changes to, to streamline things and make our code embrace more of the smart growth principles. So since we met with you last, we've had an open house meeting. It was a virtual one and we had pretty good attendance at that. Thank you all that were able to make that. We've also conducted a community survey and received some feedback from that as well. So Sarah will be sharing some of those findings with you tonight through her PowerPoint. We're looking to get you familiar with that Final Action Plan and any final comments on that. And then the direction we're seeking from council is to provide staff that direction to move forward with the Phase Two, which will actually be doing the code revisions, writing the code language. So there's a, there's a whole nother phase that will be gathering feedback and work sessions with the Council and the Planning Commission and public, opportunities for public input as well. But yeah, so without further ado, I will turn the time over to Sarah. I think we need to do a little screen sharing. Melissa, if you can help us with that, that'd be great.
She's already got me set up. Thanks, Suzanne. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone again. Just quickly, our, our agenda for tonight is to quickly recap some of the highlights from the Final Action Plan that we developed as part of Phase One. This wraps up Phase One and we'll be moving into Phase Two after this. Also wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the results from the community survey. Because I know there was a lot of interest in what people had to say about some of the questions that we were asking. So we'll look at some of those results and know that if you want to see more detailed results, Suzanne and Liz can make those available to you. So I am going to share my screen and assume that you guys can all see that. Great. Okay. So I've been, I've been asked to keep it brief tonight, so I'm happy to do that. It's a gorgeous night. I'll just hit, hit some highlights and, and then be happy to take your questions at the end. So just a quick revisit of some of our overall project objectives. This project was looking at ways to provide additional types of housing in Monmouth to really encourage a wide range of housing types. And hopefully, a wide range of housing prices to make ownership possible for more people. Looking for ways to encourage and support economic development. Related to that is creation of new and improved design standards, both for your residential zones and also for your commercial zone, your downtown commercial zone. Looking for ways to provide a more streamlined, organized, user-friendly code. And as part of all TGM projects, trying to infuse smart growth principles into the zoning code wherever we can. Excuse me. So a quick look at housing choices. One of the big recommendations that is in the action plan is to expand the types of housing that are allowed in the residential zones in Monmouth. Looking particularly at what we call those missing middle housing types, which we've talked about before. So things like duplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes, triplexes and quadplexes. That's what we mean by missing middle housing. Particularly making sure that the duplex rules related to House Bill 2001 are being met because Monmouth is likely to soon trigger the threshold over which they will have to comply with those rules, which basically say that duplexes have to be allowed anywhere in town that a single-family detached home is allowed. So along with some of these new housing types, we'll be looking at new and revised definitions for housing. Thinking about ways to increase densities and adjust lot standards, development standards to make sure that the flexibility is there to actually build these new types of housing. I'm also looking at some tiny home provisions. This is something we kind of added at the last minute, but there's been a lot of interest and it's come up a few times. So we'll be looking for some ways to potentially regulate tiny home development in your zoning code. According to the community survey, there were sort of mixed reviews on increasing densities in the residential zones. That is, oh, I don't have a chart of, this chart has to do with the second, the second piece. But about 25 to 37% of respondents supported increasing densities in at least one of the residential zones, if not more than one. We split it up by low, medium and high density. There was more support for increasing densities in your low-density zones and less support for increasing densities in your high-density zones. And again, if you want to see those details, Suzanne and Liz can provide those for you. There was definitely, I think, good support for some of these new housing types. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this, this chart here is the low-density zone. There was pretty good support for allowing tiny homes, allowing cottage clusters, which is this kind of yellowish-orange in the middle, and also allowing duplexes, which is this light blue. In your high-density zone, there was pretty good support for cottage clusters and duplexes. And what I would call maybe, you know, moderate support for tiny homes, triplexes, fourplexes and townhomes. So interesting results. Looking at the economic development objective that Action Plan recommends, a few things to streamline your development review approval process and implementing some clear and objective standards to try and hopefully remove barriers to new development. We'll also be looking for ways to allow some small-scale commercial development in the medium and high-density residential zones and looking to develop some standards to provide better regulation for food carts and food cart pods. Community survey showed pretty good support for allowing small-scale commercial uses. The green is yes to both in both the medium and high-density residential zone. And it's about, I would say, like 56% of respondents said yes to that. And about 25 said yes to commercial uses only in the high-density zone. And about maybe 17% said no to both. In terms of the food cart regulations, there was a lot of support for implementing or establishing some standards for food carts and food cart pods, close to 80%. I should have mentioned, and Liz and Suzanne could probably provide details. I want to say there were about 122 to 125 respondents on the survey. So that's, those are the numbers that we're, that we're working with. Looking at residential design standards, we, moving forward, will be looking for some ways to regulate garage placement, potentially garage size, possibly thinking about some minimum landscaping requirements and implementing some building design standards to make sure that new housing in Monmouth is meeting a certain level of, a certain standard of design. There was quite a bit of support for this. Just over 70% of respondents supported this, this concept. And about 25 said, no, thank you. And then there were a few others, and I don't know what the details were there. Looking also at implementing some new and revised design standards for buildings in your downtown commercial, your downtown Main Street area. And the intent of all of these is, is really to help to make sure that downtown Monmouth Main Street is really a comfortable, attractive, pedestrian-friendly place that people want to hang out and shop and dine and do all of those things that they like to do on Main Streets. Quite a bit of support for this. This question had more to do with the, the sort of the restrictiveness of the standards. And so you can see the blue in the middle, which was about 55% of respondents thought that it would be, supported the idea of implementing some somewhat strict standards. Very strict is the green, less restrictive is this orange and no restrictions is this light blue down here at the bottom. I wish I could give you a better description of, there was more description of very strict, somewhat strict, less restrictive. And I'm just not remembering the details of how those questions were worded. But again, those are available. So thinking about some ways to make your code more user-friendly, we'll be thinking about ways to streamline your commercial and employment zones, both by combining zones themselves and also by reorganizing and restructuring the way that permitted uses are listed within those zones. And that's by using use categories instead of these long lists of very specific uses that are in your, in your code now. There was some support for requiring neighborhood meetings for certain types of projects so that neighbors have an opportunity to meet with developers before a project really gets underway. And there was some support for changing the way your home occupation permitting is done. So survey said, definitely support for implementing neighborhood meetings. About 88% of respondents said, yes, that sounds like a good idea. About 72% of respondents said, yeah, let's make some changes to the way home occupation are, are permitted. And I believe the details there are that if the home occupation does not involve customers coming to the site, that they wouldn't be required to get a permit for that. There's a link there if you want to see the full results. And again, Suzanne and Liz can provide those as well. And quickly, next steps. We've talked about this, but we'll start working with Laura Buell at DLCD to scope and get under contract for Phase Two, which was when he actually, when we actually start drafting the code amendments that will ultimately be up for adoption into your code. And we expect, we hope, to have that contract ready by mid-June so that we can avoid having to do an extension of our existing or an expiration of our existing contract in a new contract. It's all just logistical stuff, but that's our goal to have that ready in, in mid-June. And with that, I will stop sharing, except I always forget how. While I figure that out, are there any questions? Or comments? And I know that Laura's here. I don't know if Laura, you have anything that you want to add?
Not at this time. I can certainly answer questions about logistics, not about the project exactly, because I have just joined.
Counselor Oberst, and then Counselor Carey?
So this isn't a question so much as a comment. As I look at the survey results, the, the first part of the comment is, I think our age profile doesn't probably exactly match the community age profile with a third of our respondents being 65 and over. That said, given the older nature of the respondents, the willingness to have higher densities and so on, it was very interesting. I would not have predicted those two things coming together in the way they did. I also found kind of the resistance to neighborhood commercials to being a little surprising. I was expecting to see people would be willing to have that little store down the street where when you need, you know, the quart of milk, you can just go out your door and walk three blocks instead of having to drive down to one of the grocery stores. So good stuff, though. This is always, the, the survey results were an interesting read all the way through. And the comments were revealing. It's obvious we have too many.
Tom Carey?
Just quickly, the, it's a little hard to figure those comments. And it is, it's a fairly small N, I think, with 122. And I don't know, it would be interesting to know where all those came from. And I didn't, I, I didn't digest enough of the, of the demographics there to be able to really determine that. But nonetheless, I, I will do that in time. One of the, well, I, I guess the question is, and this is perhaps for Suzanne, what are we doing here? Are we accepting this recommendation and then giving authority for a new contract, which I'm totally supportive of? And then all of that new regulation, and this would go somewhat to Sarah, would be based upon the report that we accepted? would be based upon the report that we accepted? Or, I, I'm a little unclear in terms of logistics here.
That's a great question. Thank you, Counselor Carey. And yeah, I think you, you answered the question correctly, partly correctly. So the, the action or council that we're asking tonight is to accept this as the final action plan and direct staff to enter into that agreement for the Phase Two work. There will still be opportunities, policy tweaks and changes. So this, just because it's in the final action plan doesn't mean it's what's going to end up getting adopted into our codes. There's still many steps along the way to make changes. And, and quite honestly, we may have to, that's a long list. So we may have to prioritize that a little bit, depending on how much we can actually get into the scope of work. So hopefully that provided some clarity to, to your questions.
Well, it did, it did, and, and, but it's troubling. I mean, we've had one work session on this. We've had, Sarah made a nice presentation, but she was told to be short. It's complicated stuff. And there's a number of things that gave me a little bit of heartburn that, that we didn't get discussed. So I'm, I, I, I'm afraid, and I'm fearful that, that we'll, you know, say, "Okay, go ahead." And then, then when Sarah begins work in June, she'll say, "Well, listen, you guys agreed to this back in April, and we're going forward with that." This was a complicated deal. And I admit, you know, I'm, I'm, no, this isn't my strong suit, but holy cow, we're talking about a lot of things here and that will have pretty serious implications, good and bad, in my opinion. So I, I just was wondering what the process was, and I, I think I, I have it.
If it, if it helps, I'll, I'll just add that the next phase will involve multiple iterations of recommended code amendments and multiple check-ins with Planning Commission and City Council, if that's, if that's what we need to do. You know, it varies city to city. Sometimes Planning Commission and will have like a technical advisory committee, and they're really the ones that are helping to guide the process. And the City Council just comes in at the end and says, "Yeah, if you think it's great, it's great." But every city works differently. And so if this council wants to see things early on and often, then that's how we'll scope the next phase. Because you're right, it is a lot. And we'll have to have typically, you know, multiple meetings to get through everything. We'll never get through it all in one night. And it's a lot of detail. So, so, you know, there's, there's flexibility in how we scope the next phase. And we can work in as much feedback with this group as we need to, to make sure that we're getting it right. And then when it comes time to adopt, everybody feels comfortable doing that. And the action plan is going to guide how we start in this next phase, but it's by no means, you know, the, the, the final list of things that we're going to do. It's a starting point. And it will no doubt change as we go through.
And our city attorney, Lane Shutterly?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to underscore that. What you are, the motion tonight is to accept the report, it is not to approve it. You are not endorsing all of the recommendations. And in fact, I, I think at this point, you probably can't. I think it will take a lot more of the work that will come out in this Phase Two in order to get to the point to be able to do that. So I wouldn't put too much freight on saying that your motion tonight constitutes adoption of these recommendations. There's, as Sarah said, there's a lot of detail to be worked out in Phase Two. Public process that will be involved in the Planning Commission and hearings before you as well. So I, I, I wouldn't be too concerned about approving too much here and committing yourself to any final product.
Thanks, Lane. And Counselor McKeel?
Thank you. I'm wondering if, what, if we need to provide any guidance, though, early on? Because I noticed, as I was reading through this, that there are, for example, several, several places where it talks about having less off-street parking and using more on-street parking. And if, yeah, okay, I just saw Counselor Carey, well, maybe he didn't read that to me. Yeah, and it's like, oh, this is concerning, because it's all through there. And in, there's a few places where it says, "We hope to encourage people to use transit, and we really don't have transit." So is there any guidance that we need to provide at the beginning? Because I, it's like, if we say, "Yes, go off and do it," which I think is great. I think it'd be really helpful to have this professional assistance. However, we also don't want to send you down the wrong road and have you wind up in Portland instead of Monmouth. That was a little joke, maybe that didn't work.
Oh, sorry, somebody else was gonna?
I was just gonna see if Suzanne had anything she wanted to add to that process part.
Yeah, I, Sarah and I had talked about is having some early-on discussions, or we have a couple of those policy decision options laid out to provide that direction before Sarah spends too much time. Because, yeah, we don't want to send her down a path and be like, "No, that's not what we meant." So I believe that there is, as Sarah had articulated, time to do that as part of the, the Phase Two work early on. So, yeah.
Okay, sounds like maybe that will help a little bit. John, one quick comment, and we're gonna move on. Oberst?
Okay, John, I saw the reference to narrow streets. And I just want to mention that we tried a narrow street once in Monmouth, and it's been a disaster. No parking on one side of the street. The one side of the street is parked on, is parked completely. People are parked in front yards and places on that street. And I think I would personally be very resistant to that notion of moving away from our current street width to, I think it was a twenty-eight-foot street instead of thirty-six. And that's one that I'd love to look at a little bit more closely as we go forward. And really, my comment, Madam Mayor, is historically, I think Monmouth councils have deferred to the Planning Commission right up until it's time to make a really big decision like this, at which point the council tends to take more ownership. That said, every council is different. And I do, I do believe, though, that we should have an opportunity to weigh in on a regular basis as this develops. Help, help planning know what we're looking for, or help us know what planning's thinking. And have the back-and-forth two-way conversation, even to the point of having joint meeting again if we need to. Just, you know. So, and if you're ready for a motion, I'd love to make one.
Thanks. Yep, I was just gonna mention that. I think another joint meeting with our Planning Commission is probably a good kickoff to this to really do a work session where we can go into more detail. And certainly, those individual items that you're finding in there, we'll have plenty of time to talk them through. So I would take a motion at this point, Counselor Oberst.
I, I would move to direct staff to move ahead with an agreement for Phase Two of this Code Assistance project.
And I'll second that. Oh, you got it, Counselor Lopez.
I'm gonna give the motion to Counselor Oberst and the second, Counselor Lopez. And don't see any further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? I see none, so. Oh, Counselor McKeel, were you opposed? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, I, I'm in favor. I was, it was an aye, yes.
Thank you. I thought so. All right, thank you very much. That will conclude that work. Again, thanks, Sarah, and also Laura. Nice to see you. Welcome to the team, and we'll see you in a couple months.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. And speaking of changes and setbacks, we will move on to our next item. Please, Suzanne?
Yes, yeah, so one of those code changes that couldn't quite wait. It's really cool, we had a request at the March meeting that came before the council to consider initiating amendment to our city zoning ordinance, specifically to the low-density residential chapter that would reduce the sideyard setback requirement from the current requirement of fifteen feet to ten feet. The council, after discussing this, asked to have the item referred to the Planning Commission. And so I did meet with the Planning Commission to discuss the request in April, at their April 7th meeting. And after a thoughtful discussion by the Planning Commission, they considered a number of issues and concerns, such as what the change might have or impact on any of the other development code standards. They, they did recommend that the council, their final decision consensus was to recommend that the council initiates the code change. So just here tonight to bring that back to you for your consideration on if you want to formally initiate this code change. Again, it's just a very specific change to that one part of our code to help a development that is seeking a little more flexibility for being able to build single-story homes that would appeal to some of the, the aging demographics. So you do have the three alternatives listed in your report tonight. You can initiate the request as recommended by the Planning Commission, or you can wait. This was one of the items we identified in the Code Assistance project. So we know that we have that coming up, but that will probably be at least another year to eighteen months before that's adopted. Or your third option is to just take no action on the change. So there's a sample motion when you're ready for it. And I did reattach the letter from the developer that made the request and also the code section as it's currently written. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you for that. And thank you for noting that your estimate that this would take approximately fifteen to twenty hours, including, of course, our cost of advertising hearing for a code amendment change. So appreciate that estimate. And Counselor Oberst?
So I first proposed sending this back to planning, because they are in the middle of the Code Assistance project. And apparently, eventually, this would be on their table. And the question was, now, do it now or look at it later? And as I look at the results of that survey coming in, where at least of the one hundred and twenty-two people who answered, there was a definite willingness to look at higher density. And this thing was put in place twenty years ago specifically to lower the density of some of our new development, just that little bit, to give people a little feeling of a little more room between houses. And so if we're in fact headed towards higher density and, and, and planning is good with us taking it up, I would, you know, I would be more willing to go that direction, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Duffner. I, you know, I do recall in the initial presentation that time was a little bit of the essence here and that it was likely to be, that this step was likely to be one of the steps that would be undertaken within the code review process. Are, are both of those correct?
Okay. I'm sorry to unmute there. So, sorry, just to clarify, Counselor Lopez, were you asking that is, that time was of the essence for this reducing the sideyard setback? Is that why it's come before us? Yeah, yeah, there's the, the developments, Hoffman Estates, where they've had some different builders coming in, looking at purchasing the lots and noting, noting that the, the fifty-foot-wide lots creates a pretty, a challenge to have to do the, the fifteen-foot setbacks on those in terms of building single-story. So, yeah, that plat for that subdivision is about ready to record, which will allow them to move forward with building permits. So the, this process will still take, even, so if the council initiates this tonight, it will go back to Planning Commission for a work session to look at the draft language and discuss that some more. Then we would initiate the hearings process. And there are two hearings. There's a hearing before the Planning Commission. There's a hearing before the council. And then if you approve it, then it's adopted by, or passing an ordinance. So it's probably a good six months even to, to go through this process. But that will at least bump them up a little bit in terms of being able to build some of the housing types in the, the Hoffman Estates.
Wonderful, thank you.
And Counselor McKeel?
So, I, you know, I went back to the, I'm glad, Counselor Oberst brought up a really good point with what people said that they would want. And so I went back and looked at the data on increasing the, increase the density in low-density zone from a maximum density limit of six dwelling units per acre. And only thirty-six point nine percent of the respondents said yes to that. So I don't know that that is an indicator that people want to put more homes into an area. I, I think it says that they don't want to do that.
I can respond to that, okay. So, yeah, and actually, that density question came up at the Planning Commission level. And just to be clear, there is actually a separate density standard written into our code that we're not proposing to change with the sideyard setback requirement. So you'd mentioned Counselor McKeel of the, the six units per acre. And actually, I think it's five in our code. I'd have to go back and check. But, so we're, we're not proposing to reduce that as part of this limited code amendment. That, that's something that would be part of the, the larger code update project that we were just talking about. So the, just by reducing the sideyard setbacks from fifteen feet to ten feet won't automatically increase the density, because we haven't changed that standard. It would allow the houses to be closer together, yes. You know, we can, we can see that. But it won't, at least that specific amendment won't, won't change that, that density. That takes amending another section of the code that clarifies that.
Yeah, and then maybe I'm misunderstanding what, what, what you're saying. So my apologies for that. But it looks like by, by increasing the density, what they don't want are houses that are squeezed in together, which is, I think, what we're trying to determine with just this one development. So not looking at a whole-city code change. But if they're saying that they don't want houses squeezed in together, then it appears that this development is something that's doing that. And maybe I'm missing that or something.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Counselor Oberst and then Counselor Carey take a run at this, since they both have a lot of familiarity with Planning Commission.
So, Counselor McKeel, right now, we allow six houses per acre, net acre of development. And this won't change six houses per acre. It will allow them to be a little bit closer together. My comment about density was that when people said, "Oh, yeah, we'd be fine with duplexes and cottage clusters." If you put those in single-family, you're probably gonna be raising density to seven, eight, nine units per acre overall. This, I don't think this request really changes the density. It does allow for a bigger house on the existing lot that, you know, this developer wants to see. I, you know, I made a comment a minute ago, and I'll, I'll flip that over just a little bit and note that we have had development done under this fifteen-foot sideyard standard, including one street by this same developer. And it has surprised me a little bit that the, the lots were platted at sixty feet, knowing that this existed. The, the, you know, sixty is standard pretty much everywhere. I saw our sideyards are a little different. I'm surprised they weren't planted at sixty-five. In the end, that reduces the number of lots you've got in the neighborhood. That reduces the density overall. I think that, you know, we're trying to strike a balance here. And so I'm surprised that it's an issue. It is an issue. I don't think it changes our density. That's kind of the sum.
Want me to go, Seize? I, I, I agree with Counselor Oberst and Suzanne. This is not a density issue, this is not. But what this will do, and we need to be eyes wide open with it, it allows bigger houses on what amounts to proportionally smaller. it allows bigger houses on what amounts to proportionally smaller lots. You know, so, so that's, I, 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 I think that's it. I personally don't have a problem with that, but I think we need to recognize that that's what the, what the result will be, whether it's a single family or a, a single level for, you know, an aging population or whether it's a, you know, a two-and-a-half-story big one. It'll just be bigger on, on the existing lots, which is fine.
Okay, I would entertain a motion and then I'll ask for any additional comments.
Madam Mayor, I propose the motion. I move to initiate an amendment to the Monmouth City Code to reduce the side yard setback requirement in the Low Density Residential Zone District.
Thank you, Counselor Salinas Oliveros. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez. And so any additional comments? Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, I, I would just like to, like to, to point out the, the, the danger of inferring, inferring intent from some of these questions. There's a lot of other things, and I think that Counselor Carey was trying to touch on that there. A lot of other things that densiting, that density does and density implies other than what, what, what the house setbacks from the sides of the lots look like. So, you know, it, it, it is dangerous to read too much into these. And with, with, with that, I, you know, I do feel, I do personally feel good that we are, you know, doing what's in the desires and the best interests of our, of our residents.
All right. At this point then, seeing no further questions or comments, all in favor of this proposal to initiate the amendment? Please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, we will divert the work momentarily of the overall planned code to look at this one issue and make some of this housing a little more accessible in our community. So thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
And one last thing here, a business, and then we will have our reports and a urban renewal meeting this evening. And so at this point, I'll turn it over for our last business item to Marty Wine to talk, to discuss our discussion about the council value statement.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Council. I don't know that I have a whole lot to say about the value statements at this point. This, the idea of creating value statements grew from your priority setting discussion in January. Since then, I think you've been, you've all together been working on what, what you wish these value statements will convey. And so the council discussion focused on three areas, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, communication, engagement, and sustainability. You have, there's been work just even as this packet has been published on some draft statements for your consideration. And I would like to just leave it to you to have a discussion about where these statements stand and, and whether they reflect what it is to what we want them to say.
Yes, I would like to thank everyone who was involved and engaged in this work. And it has been a real pleasure to really have these thoughtful discussions with all of us as a group originally and then sort of individually over time as people have thoughts and the words that we feel we can commit to and our discussion at our last meeting about these, us seeing these as values we establish for the council and the city. That, that we hope these values will guide the work and inform the work of our staff in all of the services that we as a local government provide. And I think I, I am pleased with the outcome. I hope that we will be able to proudly show these and that they're a living document as we, as we choose ways to continue to embody them and find ways to improve our practice. We know these values will point and be our true north in our decision-making, that we will examine all the angles of decisions against these values. But know that it's, it's something we can proudly state. So additional questions about them or any final tweaks? Although I'm hoping the answer is no to that, but Counselor Oberst.
So I've been pretty opinionated about this, I think. But I just want to say, yeah, so there's a few things that I would change. But on the, you know, the bulk, I'm really good with. I have a feeling that if I polled each and every one of you, you would tell me that there are things that you would change. And so I, my sense is probably, I'm hoping that all seven of us can step back from this and say, on balance, this is balanced. And it feels good and it feels like it describes the things that we as a group would like to move forward and try to accomplish as a council. So, you know, I, I, this has been hard work. At the same time, it's been really enlightening and informative work. And I think that if nothing else, it has helped us all get to know each other better. So yeah, I would, I would be in favor of adopting these as written, Madam Mayor.
Is that a motion? Counselor first?
It could be.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the council value statements as presented.
Second.
I thank you for the motion, Counselor Salinas Oliveros, and the second Counselor McKeel. Any additional comments or discussions?
Yay team, yay team.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much, um, everyone for all the work that we put in. Thank you very much to, to, to our city manager and staff for, for all of the, all of the hard work that's gone in here. I, I would like to stress the point that just because we have created this does not mean the work is done. These words only have meaning if we truly do live them and weave them into our actions and keep them alive through, through how we, how we comport ourselves as representatives of this community, our community. So with, with that, I, I think this is a wonderful first step, but that's what it is, a first step. And we, we, we must, together as, as a group, as John, as Counselor Oberst, my apologies, you know, stated, come together and realize that while it might not be, the future steps as well may not be to the exact desires of any one of us, that we continue to come together in, in the way that we have here for the betterment of the community and truly live this document.
Thank you, and Counselor Carey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, one, I, I, I am not as enamored with these as, as those of you that have spoken. You know, I still feel like we have some things in areas, in, in categories that don't belong. We have, under the what we value, that, that segment, we have action items there. We have action sentences that should be better placed in what we will do. Now, that's been suggested, hasn't gotten a lot of traction, but, but, and, and honestly, it's, it's the result of a lot of, and Marty, great job of getting as much of this together as you can, chopping and changing, cutting and pasting. I don't know that I've seen more commas in a document in a long time, necessary ones in particular. But on, but, but there's also, you know, I see a value statement, value statements as aspirational, as looking forward. And, you know, I saw a lot in this that was looking backwards. And, yeah, I don't know, I, I floated up a, a version of this. It didn't get a lot of traction, but I, but I was hoping was going to be a positive, forward-thinking one, but it, it didn't, which is fine. But I, I guess that's my, there's a tonal thing there that I don't, that I don't, that I don't feel good about. It seems it's looking backwards. And never mind the, the structural pieces of action items and values and that kind of thing. Whether that's something we can take on in the future, I suppose, is, is up to the group.
Yeah, thank you for that. We, I, I, since I actually typed up the final one and I thought I got a couple of your points that I really appreciated out of your last work, but we will discuss those finer points later over a glass of wine sometime. And in fact, we did move quite a few things to, to action items, as you say, right? There were things in other places. And I think this really did capture much more and absolutely can continue to be improved upon, both in tone and content as we move forward. But we do have a motion on the floor and I will take a vote to adopt these as our council and City of Monmouth value statements. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Regrettably, I'm, I'm opposed for the reasons that I talked about earlier. But I will support it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, we're all together on this.
Yeah, I know you, I know you appreciate the values and you're not opposed to the values because you were very thoughtful in looking again, taking a final look at these, Counselor Carey. So I, we will adopt these as our value statements and continue to have lively discussion about how to implement them and memorialize them. So thank you all for that. We do have our reports before the Urban Renewal Agency, but I, I would like to ask for indulgence for just about a seven-minute break, if that's okay, before we move forward. And so I have 8:13 and we'll reconvene at 8:20. Thank you. All right, once people return, we will conclude with our regular reports and council comments. Let's see, I've got two of them back. Three, four. Councilor Oberst's microphone is on, but his camera is not. There he is. Okay, now we've got the other way.
I clicked the right button.
All right, thank you all for returning. And I will start off this evening with again, a very brief mayor's report. Just in the last couple of weeks, Pacific Health Source, which is our coordinated care organization, has released a video production that was done, a public service announcement about getting the vaccine. And they invited members of our Monmouth and Independence community to talk about why either people should get the vaccine or have gotten the vaccine. And I actually am the voiceover narrator for a good part of that PSA. So we'll be sharing that to remind folks of the importance of vaccines. And that's my activities over the last couple of weeks. So I will turn it over to our city manager, Marty Wine, for her report. Oh, I'm going out of order. We'll do your report, then we'll do boards and commissions.
Okay, thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. I also have a very brief report tonight. I have just two items, both of which I think you are aware of. So first, the COVID-19 county risk level effective April 23rd through May 6th, Polk County will be one of the counties that will be in the high, moving to the high risk level. We're not anticipating any change in our city open hours or office, office operations. But our, our county would otherwise qualify for the extreme risk level based on the county metrics that the statewide hospitalization triggers have not been met. So the main impacts of being in the high risk level at this point are in the community will be the restrictions will be tighter for indoor dining and fitness centers and entertainment venues. And they're limited to 25%. So you're probably all aware of that change, but that came out, I think, earlier today. So the other thing I wanted to just mention, and I know that it's, we've regularly been reporting to you about the cleanup of the gas spill, the gasoline spill on 99W in Maine at the gas station. Department of Environmental Quality at the state is in the lead to be working with the contractor to remove soil on site at the gas station and under Main Street. And they've been working 24 hours a day since last Thursday with a goal to reopen Main Street as soon as possible. And we continue to work in our, both our sewer system and our water system to monitor for the presence of gasoline. So cleanup continues. It's not really a, it's not an exciting news story, but I just wanted you to know that that work is still underway. And that's all I've got for my report tonight. I welcome questions if you have them.
Councilor Oberst.
So I was speaking with someone who works in the medical facility there, who gave me a figure for the amount of gasoline spilled that made my eyebrows go several stories above the house. It was so high. What, do we have an estimate for how much gasoline went into the ground at this point?
What we're hearing from DEQ and NWFF, our contractor, is that they estimate the spill to be in the 14,000 gallon range. And I should have mentioned that Department of Environmental Quality has a blog, a DEQ blog that is updated and we are getting to updates about every two days when there's something to report. But that was one of the more troubling bits of news about that incident is that the spill was much greater, that many more gallons spilled than originally estimated.
All right, thank you. Reports from boards and commissions tonight, and I want to, I want to start off and let you know that we, we have, will be receiving a letter of resignation from Steve Milligan from the MyNet board. Steve very generously stepped up and committed his time to the MyNet board in lieu of what is traditionally a position from our city staff. As Scott McClure left and our interim manager Chad Olson had other focus priorities, Steve, our former councillor and mayor, and very familiar with MyNet generously committed his time to represent us on that board. And he will be, we, we will be, I will be asking for your indulgences to appoint Marty Wine as our staff representative to the board. She has been involved in listening to all of the board meetings, their sort of strategic planning sessions. And it's a good opportunity for her to go ahead and continue the tradition of having our city manager represent us on staff. We still have council liaison Chris Lopez and our citizen representative, who is David Ritchie at this time. So just to let you all know of a change that will be coming there. And that is all. I have other reports from boards and commissions. Councilor McKeel.
I am happy to report on the tree advisory board, which is doing very well under Chuck Thurman's wonderful leadership, so, along with the citizen group. So however, we do have three openings. So if you have friends or family who love playing in the dirt, enjoy digging holes, and adding to the improvement of Monmouth, being that this is Arbor Day, please, please refer them to the, the board site so that they can apply because it's, it's a lot of fun. I just wanted to report that Gordon Taylor, who is one of the members of the tree advisory board, purchased a couple of trees. He bought two tulip trees and one red maple tree and then donated it to the city. So thank you to Mr. Taylor. And the, the board also agreed that the tree, that the city should purchase Zelkova Japanese street trees to replace a few of the trees that have died in Madrona Park. And so all the trees, the three that were provided by Mr. Taylor and the three that the city are going to buy will all go into Madrona Park and wait for it. It will be this Saturday. So if you have nothing to do this Saturday morning and you want to come out into nature and do something incredibly fun, and it's really nice, it's like you do it and the work is done. And you can see product, it's great. So we'll be out there this Saturday, April 24th, 9:30 a.m. You could also, it's a great place to use your pocket knife because you have to cut the string on the tree balls. It's, it's just so much fun. Sorry, that's just, we also, Mr. Taylor is going to look, Councilor Carey, he's going to look at the crape myrtles and check them out. I think what he's, what he thinks needs to be done is they need to be a little pruning. And I offered to help because I've got these really great snippet things or loppers. And so we'll be, we'll be pruning some trees and also doing some pruning of trees in Madrona Park. We have planning going on for the fall tree planting. So more fun is coming if you miss the one this Saturday.
That's right. Yeah, Rebecca, Councilor Selena Salavantis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My report is with the Historic Commission. May is Historic Preservation Month and we will be having a scavenger hunt around the city. There's some great pictures that were taken and we're all coming up with some clues. We're hoping to publicize this a little more and maybe get some of the schools involved and families involved. It's a great outdoor activity. We're also going to have information about Squire Whitman, who founded Monmouth, and then also about the Kalapulia Indians as well and the land that we are on. And, and so it's a great educational opportunity to learn about our city. And that, that information, as far as the scavenger hunt, we're looking at having that at businesses and having prizes and rewards and just, just to really try to engage the community about how historic Monmouth is. And then we also saw a draft for the call for artists for the mural for the side of the Ross Building. And Suzanne Duffner did an amazing job putting that application together. So more to come with that. And then we also had a fun discussion of future things to come with the scavenger hunt. If we wanted to go a little high tech and have some QR codes and pop up a map and maybe try to engage, you know, some of our techies and, and young individuals to have more fun with that. So that is my report for the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Great, then, Councilor Oberst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Parks Board met on the 14th. The first thing I want to mention is that they did the previous meeting and I didn't want to announce this until they had, the recipients had been announced, but they gave $500 grants to outdoor fitness classes, the Outdoor Explorers three day camp, the skate, skate sports camp, the Great Oregon Shakeout Cycling Event and the Library Story Walk. However, and most of those dollars have been distributed. However, the grant to the library has subsequently been rescinded because it was concluded it's not a really good idea for one city department to give a grant to another city department. And, and the suggestion is in future, the friends of the library can make the grant application for the story walk. And that should address that, we think. So most of these events need, the events need liability insurance and most of them said that's not an issue. The skate camp is going to be maybe a little bit more of a trick and we're looking for a solution to that. And finally, what about that library money? Where did it go? Well, the proprietor of the costume shop on Main Street has proposed a movie night in the park with a pirate theme. So get out your pirate accoutrement. At some point, we will have a, an event, a movie night event in Main Street Park. An update on the skate park, the contract has been signed for design and construction estimate, which is important, not just because it will give us some really nice drawings to hang on the wall in Volunteer Hall, but also because it will be the pieces of information needed to apply for grants and for seeking contributions in kind and otherwise. There's going to be a meeting of the, I'm thinking maybe this is, there has been a meeting at this point of the design firm with local skaters to start working out some of the design details. How high do you want that? How wide do you want the other thing over there? You know, trying to really come up with a design that will meet the needs. Bryce Redberry, who's been really leading the charge on this, has taken regular employment. So the meetings will be shifting to evenings instead of daytimes and don't know when exactly yet. Finally, an update on the bike rack situation. The old high wheeler that was on Main Street in front of the former bike shop is in for refurbishment. And the decision is, we discovered there is already a bike rack in Jelen Woods Park, a single, one of those U-shaped staples sticking out of the ground, which are really good bike racks. But therefore, it's going to Cherry Lane Park instead. And I think near the, is it Ackerman Street side of that park? So that will be accomplished before the end of the fiscal year, is my understanding. Finally, two quick pieces of new business. There has been a tradition of the Parks Board getting together and touring parks and saying, let's fix that. Let's do this thing over here with kind of a really a lack of a listing and a follow up. And so there was a request, this time we get, you know, we, we follow up and see what of the suggestion gets done. There's also been a joint potluck with the tree board. And people felt that maybe by late summer, we'd be in a position to do that. So the request was, let's try to move ahead with that. And finally, in order to meet the needs of some of our members, the Parks Board meeting has been moved to 6:00 p.m. instead of the current seven. And it will still be on the second Wednesday, thus and therefore, 5:13 at 6 o'clock will be the next Parks Board meeting. And that's all I have.
Great, great work. And Councilor McKeel.
I just want to follow up with Councilor Oberst. See, we have so much fun, we even have potlucks. So join the tree board.
I planted many, many trees during my 10 years in Cece's seat and got really good lessons from Mark Fancy, who actually took urban forestry courses at OSU on how to plant a tree. So I thought I knew, I didn't, now I do.
All right, and Councilor Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I have a report from the Arts and Culture Commission. And before I get into the details of that, I'll ask you to bear with me while I make, make a very quick, very quick request. We do have an open seat on the commission. And the, the commission has also indicated a desire to really expand their, their, their traditional focus to include the culture aspect of arts and culture. And so if, if you're interested in joining the Arts and Culture Commission, there, there is an application on the city website. You can also go into City Hall. And we, we are very excited to look forward and broaden our scope from just the traditional fine arts to include performing arts and other aspects of culture as a whole. We're also, also really hopeful to be able to, within the guide of our new council, council priorities here, to be able to expand our diversity on the commission. And so please do come and we'd love to have you. One current item that Arts and Culture is, is working on is that we do have a grant opportunity out there. And the purpose for the Arts and Culture Grant program is to encourage and support arts-related activities and projects within Monmouth. And so this, you do not have to be an organization to apply. Of course, nonprofits within Monmouth or that are working in Monmouth can apply. But if you're an individual that is within Monmouth, you're, you're able to apply as well. Or if you're an individual in Monmouth working with a nonprofit that's, or working through a nonprofit that's not physically in Monmouth, but you're here, you know, you're able to apply. So the, the grant amounts are between $100 and $1,000. And the deadline for application is coming up. It's April 30th. Information about the grants and, and the application form is on the city website. It's right on the front page. When I look it up on my computer, it's on the left-hand side, about halfway down the front page there. So we'd, we'd love to have your ideas and we'd love to see how we can better forward our, our local arts and culture here. And then I also have a little tag on to what, what our mayor Coon said. I'd like to extend a huge thanks on behalf of MyNet and on behalf of myself and the city to Steve Milligan for his service to the board. You know, there's a lot of transition here lately with, you know, with the bringing on our new city manager, Marty Wine. And having, having Mr. Milligan in that position during this time of transition was really key and crucial to, to be able to continue our success there. He has incredible depth of history and knowledge about, about that organization and the city. And it was really wonderful to be able to serve with him. MyNet does meet this Thursday. We're meeting virtually. And in our next meeting, council meeting, all have more information from that MyNet meeting for you.
Okay, great, thank you. We typically have a planning commission report, so, Councilor Carey.
Madam Mayor, I didn't report because the product of our last meeting was an agenda item that we had today. So that's what they, that's what came from the meeting that we had two weeks ago. So in, in the interest of time, I was passing, but thanks for thinking of me.
Yep, I figured that was their, their agenda. So thank you very much. We do have a couple of moments for council comments before we adjourn to the urban renewal. Anyone have any announcements or comments? Councilor Oberst.
Slipping off my city councillor hat, putting on my co-chair of the Friends of Monmouth City Hall pack. We are Monmouth City Hall PAC, we are slowly but surely working our way through town and visiting with registered voters, seeking support. If anyone in the audience has an overwhelming desire to meet their fellow Monmouth residents, I'm the guy to talk to. I would be more than happy to guide you in that endeavor. We are down to about 10 days before ballots hit mailboxes. My sense of things is that the community is interested in this measure and perhaps supportive. We will find out on May 18. In the interim, come see me, I have work for you to do. Thank you all.
And he also has a lot of answers to questions. So we know as folks have questions about this project and why we're undertaking it, lots of good information on our website as well as residing in his head. And Counselor Carey.
I, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of Hamid Barani Keshani, longtime business professor and chair at Western Oregon, a guy that's been in our community for a long time, really good guy, and suddenly passed. And we feel bad about that, all of us.
Yes, thank you. All right, at this time then, I would accept a motion to adjourn to the urban renewal meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, city council is adjourned. And we will now switch hats and the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Monmouth, I would like to call to order our meeting of Tuesday, April 20. And again, we start with the roll call of members of the board. Phyllis?
Ms. Belts is excused. Mr. Carey?
Here. Here.
Ms. McKeel?
I'm here too.
Mr. Oberst?
I'm here, John, you had us in suspense.
Ms. Salinas Oliveros?
Here.
Ms. Coontz, Chairman Coontz.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am here as well. And we do have minutes from our most recent meeting, which was also held on April 6. Those minutes were in the packet. And if I would accept a motion for the consent agenda item of the minutes of April 6.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda item of the minutes from yeah, that day.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McKeel and Mr. Carey for the motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, seeing none? Thank you. We will move to our business agenda. And I believe Suzanne is introducing this item. So thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, great. So a little. And for a general assistance grant request that the city received from Crush Wine Bar and Tasting Room. So this is a grant that's funded from our urban renewal funds for eligible properties. And as you know, Crush is a wine bar and tasting room on the corner of Main Street and Warren, just across from our volunteer City Hall area. The applicant is John Bracken, who is with us tonight from Crush Wine Bar, and he is looking to expand his kitchen space. I don't know if you, there are some photos in the packet tonight that show kind of the existing conditions, and it's a pretty small space that they're working in, pretty cramped. I think there's some garden sheds that might be a little bit bigger size than that current size. So the desire is to be able to expand that commercial kitchen space into the adjacent addition that's on the Warren Street side of the building. It was an add on to the original building and to be able to to make that into more of a professional kitchen space where they'll have much more room for an upgrade to kitchen appliances, to be able to expand their their menu offerings as part of their restaurant. So the cost estimate is approximately $40,000 to the building improvements. That doesn't include the actual kitchen equipment costs as well. So the kitchen equipment, depending on whether or not it's purchased, used or new, will range from another 16 to 28,000 as well on top of that 40,000. And the amount requested is 15,000. So that's our usual maximum request for these general grant assistance. We do require a 50% match requirement from the business or property owner. So in this case, with the 40,000 plus dollar project cost, the applicant as well exceeding that 50% match requirement. There is more detailed information in the application about the proposed improvement. So it's improving the shell of the addition and being able to complete the flooring and the walls, the upgrades to the electrical mechanical systems to be able to install the hood. So it's it's will be quite the state of the art kitchen once it's completed or there's a layout provided in there. Our criteria that we consider for these general grant assistance is if it, if the projects are consistent with our urban renewal plan objectives and goals, certainly this project would increase business activity, employment opportunities in our downtown Main Street sub district, which the property is located in. We do have the funds budgeted and available. This would be our first grant request of this fiscal year. So we do have funds available. And it's certainly the project that's consistent with our goals to create a vibrant downtown that has, you know, destination restaurant businesses for folks to come down and enjoy the Main Street District, certainly would be a significant investment, an adaptive reuse of this building, and help retain an existing business that's been in Monmouth for a number of years. So staff is recommending approval of the grant application. These grants are done as on a reimbursement basis. So if approved, the city staff will prepare a grant agreement to enter into with the applicant, the business owner. And then the work gets completed. There's an inspection that's done, they have to get permits. They've already spoken with our building official about the steps needed to get it permitted properly. And then if it passes those inspections, then we, upon receipt of a paid invoice, and we were able to reimburse for up to the grant amount awarded, which again, that request is 15,000 in this instance. There are some sample, or there's alternate alternatives outlined in your staff report and a proposed motion. And then I was just going to turn briefly to John before we opened up to questions to see, John, if you had any other comments or questions that you wanted to to clarify on the application.
Thank you, Suzanne. That was, that was a great rundown of what we've got going on. Well done, thank you. I think one of the the only things I'd probably add to that is part of the design in our layout of that section of building is is including the future ability to possibly move into the front space of that that building right behind us. So there'll be room for a pass through a doorway, basically, for our staff to be able to service customers in that, in the front part of that space at 111 Warren Street, which is right now occupied by some audio technician guy. But there's been negotiations going on with renting that space out and improving that space as well in the future. So with our improvements to the section of the building that we have been granted access to, now we will be incorporating some framing and some stuff that'll allow us to more easily move into that space and improve that space at a future date when funds are a little bit more available than than now. But so that may be a second step, a second phase in the project, you know, in the next year or so, depending on what that tenant does. So I want to throw that out there. And then also, I know we had pretty limited space in that report, but we included some pictures of the bird's nest and the gap in the buildings that showed just kind of how rough that that building had gotten, how neglected it was. And so anyway, it was, it was quite the the storage facility, I guess, used in the past. So anyway, it'll be quite the improvement over its previous use, that's for sure.
That is for sure.
Yeah.
This is very exciting. I'd love to see that, see this opportunity for you. And again, faith and commitment during crazy time, John, to to continuing to provide this. Do I see any questions from council? Yes, Counselor McKeel.
So it's great that we have this urban renewal fund to be able to help. This, this is really exciting. And it's a very, it's a very interesting picture that you provided of the space that you want to move into is like, yikes, that's needs a lot of help. My concern is, because you're not the owner of the building and you'll be making a lot of improvements to this building, will the landlord of the building say, okay, look, it's worth a lot more now, we've just fixed it all up? So is the, is there? And I asked this question earlier of Ms. Duffner about the possibility of asking the the person who owns the building not to increase rent because it's now worth more. And I don't know if that's a possibility or not. And so, Mr. Shutterly, if you could, I think that's a question to you, and maybe there's nothing to do, but it would be nice to protect the business owner a bit for not having increased rent because the, we've been able to provide some urban renewal dollars to help get that building ready for you.
I would, I would say that's probably nothing for us to do. It's not part of the grant program, not a criteria, not a condition of approval that's within the rules and regulations of the program, something perhaps for some future consideration, but I don't think that this would be something we can pose as a condition of this grant.
Okay, thank you for that.
Great, other comments or questions?
Respond though, if you guys want.
Thanks, John, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I thought that was a good question. I also had that concern and then spoke to the the building owner about that. And he had, he brought up a good point. And well, one is, he, when we originally talked about taking over the space, it was pre-COVID. He granted me the space through the end of my lease, which has a few more years on it for no additional charge, even though we had already agreed on a additional rent for that. So that showed me a little bit of a sign of his willingness to work with us, as well as offering up the the point of the benefit of the free market in my favor or to alleviate my concern, which was, again, what you were, what you were concerned about there as well. And that is, if he spikes up the rent to an unreasonable level, and and I don't agree to it, then he's got a vacant building and somebody would have to agree to pay that unreasonable rent. But that's kind of where the free market sort of balances itself, where nobody rents from if he asks for too high of a rent. So I do expect to maybe have to pay for that additional rent in the future upon lease renewal, but it's a couple of good signs in in my my gut there anyway, saying that. It wouldn't be too bad of an increase if it were to have any at all, so. But good question, I, yeah.
Well, and if you left, we'd all be in mourning. So we're, we're trying to alleviate that. You've got a great, you've got a great restaurant and wine par, part thing.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. We're trying.
Okay, and so obviously, this does meet all the current requirements of the grant and the amount of 15,000 Suzanne, you mentioned, is the maximum under this particular program, right? So, okay. And yes, Counsel, Ms. Salinas Oliveros?
I am ready to entertain a motion if no one else has any other questions. So, okay, I move to approve the general assistance grant application for 15,000 for Crush Wine Bar and Tasting Room located at 105 Main Street East.
And I would know that this is exactly what this program is for, so I would second that motion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Salinas Oliveros and Mr. Oberst. And seeing no additional questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that says unanimously, we are very pleased to be able to provide a little bit of support towards this project. So go forth, and we'll be excited to to step into the space, which is unimaginable at this point, looking at those photos.
We're excited to, sorry, we're excited to see like the addition to your menu. So I'm like, wow, my mouth is watering.
Yep, we'll just get through this part of the pandemic so we can go back to more capacity, but in the meantime, we'll enjoy the smaller capacity in the tent, so.
And be sure to wish John a happy birthday. Today is his birthday, so he gets extra points.
Should we sing? No, I'm sorry.
But thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Happy birthday, John.
Oh, thank, oh, yeah, and I tried to keep that seamless plug out of there, but but I appreciate everybody. Thank you so much for your time. And I know you guys all have a lot of stuff going on, so taking the time to consider this was very appreciated. Thank you.
All right.
Best birthday gift ever.
All right, I don't believe we have any other business before the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Carol? Yep.
So I actually have just a quick question because this is all new to me with Urban Renewal Fund. And I was wondering how other business owners in downtown or in the urban renewal district are informed about this? Did we send them a letter? And I apologize for my ignorance on this. I just like, oh, this is really cool. Do we, do they all know?
Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor McKeel. So it hasn't been as robust, I will, you know, fully admit, that in the last year, things kind of been COVID, COVID, right? But I think part of it is speaking to the businesses and seeing a need and making that one on one contact. We're fortunate in that a lot of the businesses in the past on Main Street have taken advantage of it to at least do a painting, you know, if they're building on the outside for the facade grant. But I think now that we're waning in our last years of urban renewal, that your your point is a good reminder that we have changes in business owners and property owners, and and it's a good opportunity to to make that plug for it. I mean, it does require the match, so it it's a little bit unusual to have a business like John's that's coming forward, ready to expand and have that match available. But I think, you know, with some of the restaurant relief fund that's coming out, hopefully that will help make some of our restaurants whole, so there there could be other opportunities. So and please, if you're aware and you're, you know, speaking with businesses and residents, you know of somebody that might benefit, please let me know, and I would be more than happy to to make that contact and explain the opportunities there. And it's not just Main Street businesses. We do have some assistance on the East Main Street side as well to be able to help with some of those funds.
But it, but it, they do have to be in the urban renewal district.
Have to be in the urban renewal. Yeah, there are certain, yeah, restrictions on that. So.
Yeah. And just to let you know, we, we also were able to support Petals and Vines as they remodeled after they were unfortunately hit by a car and added a lot of their accessibility and, um, things. We, we also, uh, contributed money from urban renewal for that. So we have had a couple of sort of more visible projects and look forward to even more. And, uh, Counselor Oberst, I am not going to recognize you unless you are going to adjourn because we're after nine o'clock and I'd like to finish up here. So.
I just wanted to remind you also of the, uh, work with the building on the corner of Main and, uh, Monmouth, that the Urban Renewal District made it possible to, uh, keep that historic mural on the side of the building to show through into what's now Amity. So that was another, I think, fifteen thousand dollar grant to enable that. That's all.
Yep. Got some great history. We will catch up on some time. So. And do, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah.
All right. I hear two of them. Thank you, Mr. Oberst and Ms. Salinas Oliveros. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you all.